New process for us. Looks like Commissioner Womack.
Commissioner Sparks is having difficulty signing in as well.
Oh, I see her. I see Commissioner Sparks. There she is. Okay.
Okay.
Yes, I was having trouble signing in.
Okay, it is eight thirty-two. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Kent County Board of Commissioners for Thursday, April twenty-second. I don't know that we can mute these microphones that are above us in the room, so I would ask everyone to kind of keep your voices down so that there's audio that works for everyone. Welcome, and Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Good morning, Madam Chair. As I call the roll, I want to remind you that if you are joining us virtually, please state that you are present and the location in which you are joining us, from which you are joining us. Commissioners Green.
Here.
Antor. Commissioner Antor. Commissioners Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioners Jones.
Here, Kent County Jury Room, Grand Rapids.
Thank you, Commissioner. If you are present at the meeting site, you do not need to give me your location.
Got it.
Vice Chair Stack.
I'm here.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Here.
Burrell.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Brevi.
I'm here.
Teal.
Here.
Sparks.
Present, Kent County, Michigan, Kentwood.
McLeod.
Kentwood, Michigan.
Hennessy.
Here.
LeGrand.
Here.
Volkowski.
Present on Anishnabi land known as Grand Rapids, Michigan, Kent County.
Womack.
Here, Grand Rapids, Michigan, Kent County.
Woodin.
Here, calling in from Grand Rapids, Michigan, and Kent County.
Skaggs.
Here, East Grand Rapids, Kent County, Michigan.
Chair Boelter.
I'm here.
Madam Chair, you have seventeen members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to invocation, and I'll call Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was really saddened because last month I was supposed to give the invocation, so I said, oh my gosh, I hope that I get a chance to give the invocation. Being a pastor's daughter, I won't be before you too long. I just wanted to tell a message for all of us that tough times don't last, but tough people do. That's one of my favorite sayings. But I also would like to take the time to read my favorite scripture to you as well because I think that in today's times, it's very calming and relaxing. And I just want us to take heart and remember the words of Psalms nine-one. So Psalms nine-one, nine-one-one, if you really look at it. Whoever dwells in the shelter of the Most High will rest in the shadow of the Almighty. I will say unto the Lord, He is my refuge, He is my fortress, my God in whom I surely trust. Surely He will save you from the fowler's snare with the deadly pestilence. He will cover you with His feathers, and under His wings you will find refuge. His faithfulness will be your shield and rampart. You will not fear the terror of night nor the arrows that fly by day. A thousand may fall at your side and ten thousand at your right side, but it will not come near you. You will only observe with your eyes and see the punishment of the wicked if you say, "The Lord is my refuge." And if you make the Most High your dwelling, no harm will overtake you, no disaster will come near your tent, for He will command His angels concerning you to guard you in all your ways. So when we listen to the Bible scriptures, we can find peace and we can find calm. But then there's the external part of us, the man part of us, that says, hey, all of this is going on around me. There's COVID, there's people dying. There's so many things that we can look towards that it feels like it's a weight, the weight of the world is on our shoulders. And as commissioners and the people watching, but especially to my colleagues, I want to thank you for all that you've been doing to help Kent County get through this pestilence. And our Health Department want to be mindful and thank you as well. So just want to remind you this morning that tough times don't last, but Kent County will. Thank you. Father God, I thank you so much for your time today to share with the people the information that I believe you place on my heart. May we find rest and peace through the anxiety, through the fear, through the pain, through the regret, through the anguish, through everything that we are experiencing as Americans and as people that live in our community. Will you be our shield? Will you be our refuge? We invite you to that today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Let the religion, through the flag of the United States of America, and through the republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Sparks. We are on to item five of our agenda, Special Order of Business. And we have a new President and CEO of The Right Place joining us today, Randy Thiel, as well as Tim Maraz, Senior Vice President of Strategic Initiatives. So welcome, gentlemen, to Kent County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Well, good morning, everybody. And I have to tell you, I suspect like many of you on this call or on this Zoom, we all wish we could be there in person today. And being, you know, relatively new to the market, I've been here about six weeks now. I especially wish we were in person. I really look forward to the moment when we can all gather again and meet in person, but obviously, we're not quite there yet. So I appreciate the accommodation this morning. We'll do our best to introduce myself and sort of some new thinking we have at The Right Place. But today, we really just want to cover a couple of things. I'll introduce myself a little bit. We'll talk a little bit about how we're modifying the strategy just a touch, just to make it a little bit more approachable, a little bit more relatable across the region. But really, it's full speed ahead for us at The Right Place. And then my colleague, Tim Maraz, will talk about the specific outcomes that we delivered for the county last year in the midst of a tough recession and a tough pandemic. So if you don't mind, just so my quick background, and again, we're going to try to keep this tight to about five to 10 minutes, so we have more time for your questions and get to the key issues that you want to address with The Right Place. But my background is 25-plus years in economic development. On the bulk of that here in Michigan, where I worked in Northern Michigan and Osceola County for a stretch, down in the Detroit area in Monroe, and then four years for the state of Michigan's economic development before finally making my way to West Michigan, where I was the first president of Lakeshore Advantage, which is our sort of partner organization to the west and the Holland and Zealand market. From there, my family with our four kids made a pretty wild decision, and we left and ventured west to Omaha, Nebraska, where I led an eight-county, two-state regional economic development effort, very similar to The Right Place, size and scope. And we had terrific success while I was there and had a lot of fun sort of working across the region to drive that economic growth. After about almost five years, we decided we wanted to move again and find a place that maybe was a little bit more to our liking from a livability standpoint. And we moved further west to Denver, where I was the last three years and really was able to work in a really high-growth, robust market and understand how that came to be. And I think as I come back now to West Michigan, which I consider home, to apply some of the learning that I have acquired out of states and leverage sort of my passion for the communities is fundamentally why I'm excited to be back. And I look forward to working with all of you to continue and advance us forward. So at a high level, if you don't mind, who was ever running the slideshow, if you could advance to the next slide. Our mission, I hope all of you know, after a long productive partnership with each other, you know, our mission is really to drive sustainable economic growth across the region for all, so that all have opportunities, whether it's a career pathway that allows them to achieve their fullest and highest potential, or a business startup or a business expansion that can allow for more opportunities for more people. That fundamentally is what we do, that's what gets us out of bed each morning and trying to find ways to grow a dynamic, prosperous region. And forgive me, I don't have control of the slide deck here, so if somebody could advance the slides for me, that would be great. And you'll see at the bottom there of our vision statement, the addition of this people, place, and prosperity concept, where we're trying to really reframe our strategy around these three pillars, people, place, and prosperity. And we'll dig into those a little bit further if we can go to the next slide. Thank you. So on people, again, we're taking the core strategic plan that The Right Place developed about a year and a half ago. You'll see the strategies listed down there below of economic inclusion and talent growth and attraction, which roll up into this people sort of pillar. We lead with people. In economic development, we talk a lot about, you know, ribbon cuttings and ground breakings are the things that sort of make the headlines. But fundamentally, we need to start with our eye and our lens of people and how do we make sure we're getting the fullest and highest potential from everyone across the region. And in this last year, we completed, or earlier this year, we completed a research study with the Brookings Institution on diversity and inclusivity across the region. And we, you know, uncovered, I think, what many probably knew it already, that we have a lot of work to do here. And so we're really digging in at The Right Place, making sure the work we do, the work all of us do, has a greater degree, a much greater degree of economic inclusion as we move forward. Next slide, please. Second is place, and we can't be the region that we want to be without a great quality of life offering for the people that choose to live here, the people that choose to relocate here. We want it to be a really magnetic place that keeps people here and draws more in. And so getting awfully strategic around how we do additional place-making. Certainly, in the core of Grand Rapids, we've had a remarkable run. But across the region, we've seen, and across the county, we've seen communities really step up their game and invest in themselves and make it a more dynamic place. And at The Right Place, we can lean in and help support those efforts. Next slide, please. And then third is prosperity. So people plus place and prosperity is really the new sort of fundamental strategy here at The Right Place. And this prosperity piece is what we often talk about. It's what makes, as I said before, the headlines. But it is that aggressive business retention and expansion program. It is an aggressive reach on the attraction side, trying to bring new companies here that can add to the mix and really continue to make this a dynamic and vibrant place. You'll see economic inclusion listed here. Again, it's one of our existing strategies, but rolling into that prosperity effort around making sure we get the level of minority business development that we need and have to achieve here in this region and make sure we have the level of job opportunities and the pathway jobs that allow people to climb and grow their career here. All key elements of our prosperity strategy. Next slide, please. Thank you. And so last year is the first year of our three-year economic development plan. Obviously, when we started the year 2020, nobody on this call anticipated a global pandemic that would lead to a global recession. But in the midst of that headwinds, The Right Place was pleased to announce we made good progress, not great progress, but good progress towards our goal. And we have every confidence we're going to be able to make up time in the next, in the last two years of our three-year plan to progress forward. To go through the Kent County details, and again, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have following our remarks here, but to cover the Kent County details and the outcomes we were able to deliver, I'm going to turn it over to Tim Maraz, who was actually here and helped deliver those results last year. Can speak better to that. Yep.
Awesome. Thank you. So yeah, if you want to just flip to the next slide, one of the things that I did was I broke out those same metrics that you saw on the previous slide into just Kent County. Because as many of you, as many of you know, we are a regional economic development organization. And right now, we do cover six different counties across West Michigan. So when you break out just Kent County alone, overall, about a third of our metrics, a third of our results happen here in Kent County. The one of the things I do want to highlight before I go on to the next slide is that wage count. As you know, we called out a wage goal of $26 per hour, and we actually are hitting that right now for Kent County, for our Kent County project. So, next slide. So one of the things I want to do is just spend a little bit of time highlighting some of the work that we've done. Commissioner Volkowski and I were talking before, you know, before we started. And I think 2020 in many ways was a blur for us. I just wanted to take a minute and look back on actually what, actually, we did accomplish as a partnership between the county and The Right Place. One of the things was were the small business grants. As you may recall, The Right Place was asked to administer not one, but three small business grants over 2020 and 2021 so far, two in 2020, one in 2021. Two of them were state grants. One of them was a federal grant. And what I want to share with you here this morning is some of the results of that. So there were about $15 million in funding that was distributed to small businesses around the region. Of that 15 million, about half of it, 8.5 million, went to Kent County businesses. And we were actually able to touch almost 1,700 companies through those three programs. In Kent County, it was about 780, like you can see. And then in terms of jobs retained or jobs rehired as a result of these programs, actually 17,000 jobs across our region. Our employers have committed to saying if they were to, if they received this emergency funding, that they would be able to keep those, keep those jobs on board. Almost 10,000 here in Kent County. One of the things we're particularly proud of, and the second round of grants that we did was a federal grant, and one of the things we, because it was federal funding, we were asked to track was the percentage of minority women in veteran-owned businesses that were supported through these grants. And I'm proud to say that 73% of the funding in Kent County, which was about $5.5 million, 73% of that funding went to minority women or veteran-owned businesses here in Kent County. So region-wide, that number was 63% for us. So Kent County actually exceeded that by quite a bit. Next slide. Also, one of the things we're really proud of this past year was the partnership with the county regarding the Wi-Fi hotspot project using CARES Act funds. As you can see, I actually went out in one of my local communities and snapped this photo. This is actually one of the units that's actually installed and working right now. To the right, all those little yellow dots are actually from the Kent County Mapping Department that actually provides real-time mapping of access to these points. There's actually 78 of them now scattered around the county that provide free Wi-Fi access to citizens of Kent County. We actually pretty probably had 18 municipalities participate in the program, including or plus the Kent County Parks Department. And then when we were done, we actually had some funding left over, and I'll give credit to Commissioners Skaggs on this one. There was a push to say, you know, how can we continue to use this funding? The municipalities that wanted to participate did participate already. How can we continue to push forward? And actually, working with Kent County ISD or the Kent ISD, we actually worked with them to purchase 11 units for the ISD themselves to provide free Wi-Fi in and around particular schools around the area that were, that had underserved Wi-Fi access. So, my next slide. In terms of our overall COVID business response, I won't go through all of these, but as you can imagine, 2020 was a little bit of a unique year for The Right Place in terms of pivoting our work. You know, obviously, it was very hard to get on a plane and start attracting businesses to the area. And, you know, there was a large amount of uncertainty with our business owners. And you can see that reflected in the business assist that we provided. Throughout 2020, we had over 1,800 individual business assists, where businesses actually called us for a wide variety of support, anything from I need Plexiglas to advice on safety policies, getting back to work, on shutdown efforts, on standard expansion efforts. Actually, in the midst of all this, we were still working with businesses that were growing and expanding and helping with supply chain issues, but it was three times what it was in 2019. So you can imagine what, you know, what the communication flow was between us and our area businesses. One of the other things we're actually very proud of our partnership with Kent County was in the support of the Kent County PPE program that you guys launched, you know, over the summer. We worked with the purchasing and logistics department for Kent County to help locate and find a local kitting company and fulfillment company that could fulfill those, those kits that Kent County purchased through CARES Act funds to get those out to areas of small businesses. So that was, I would, I will use this word, it was a fun project. I actually enjoyed working on the project and the supply chain team at the county is second to none. So. And finally, the one of the things I wanted to highlight there, we did launch covidwm.org with all the COVID-related information coming down from the state level, from the federal level. One of the things that we wanted to make sure was our businesses had the latest information that pertained to actual business and not just personal health and things like that that were coming out of the Kent County Health Department. So we launched covidwm.org along with many of our local, our local partners, including the Hispanic Chamber, Grab, and some other folks. And that continues today. So we publish new content to that website every day, keeping employers informed of what's going on in our community as it relates to COVID and their businesses. So with that, I think that's it. Next slide. That's it for us. I can kind of give you a quick recap of 2020.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. Maybe just one last comment before we take questions. You know, it's in a strange way, this moment is a great opportunity. I mean, it's, as the Commissioner said earlier, this is a tough time, but we're tough people. And this is one of those recessions, unlike most, where, you know, a recession in the past that maybe hit the financial markets a little bit more, or the automotive market a little bit more. This one is global. It's almost been universally applied equally across the world. And so nobody has an advantage or a disadvantage necessarily coming out of the recession. So it's an opportunity for us, with strong leadership, to propel ourselves forward and maybe bypass or pass by some of the competitive regions around the country and around the world. So for us at The Right Place, it is full speed ahead. Again, as we're just slightly adjusting the strategy around people, place, and prosperity, but the work plan itself remains intact, and this is really all about execution rather than trying to redraft the strategy. So with that, I'd be happy, or Tim and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you so much for that, that great, concise, thank you, Tim. You know, I like to speak 10-minute presentations. I appreciate that. Randy, welcome to Kent County. We're so excited to have you here. So it's going to be a little awkward because I'm trying to look at people on the screen and in the room. So Pam will be texting me if your hand is up on the screen. It looks like Commissioner Skaggs had a question.
Thank you, Chairs. Yeah, just a couple of things. Randy, welcome to Kent County. Excited to have you here and work with you. Tim, of course, thanks for the shout-outs. I'll be by with the beers later. And just want to thank the entire Right Place for everything they did on Wi-Fi PP and everything else that you talked about. I think it's a clear indication that the county and its partners can really fulfill our strategic vision of making this a better place to live for everyone. In line with that, I know that there's been work going on for a year and some real strong progress made in January, but it was something that you didn't touch on, which was, I think, the brainchild of Burgett. And that is the new Community Transformation Fund. So I was wondering if one of you wanted to comment on that, introduce it to people that don't know about it yet, and comment on its progress and where it's headed.
Yeah, thank you. So I mentioned earlier, in January, we wrapped up a study with the Brookings Institution. And if you have not seen it, I'd be happy to share it and get a copy to everybody. But hopefully, by now, you've seen it. In the midst of that study, even before it was completed, it became painfully obvious that it is, in so many categories, West Michigan, Kent County, Grand Rapids, we sort of play above our weight class, if you will. We outperform the market from so many economic indicators. But when we, when we looked at the data as it relates to minority business development and the scale and size of those minority business owners, businesses, it was nowhere near where we need to be. So even before the study was completed, it was recognized that was an absolute critical need. And there's a lot of, it's a big puzzle we have to put together to address that. But one of the big pieces to advance that was the need for capital, in particular, equity investment capital. And so The Right Place and partners jumped into that right away. Again, not waiting for the plan to be completed to take action. There's an intermediate goal of about $10 million that we established, and we're not quite there. We're at about $9 million right now. We've since spun that fund out of The Right Place, so it's now a separate entity altogether. Scott Welch is really leading the charge on that program. Burgett is still engaged with it as a board member and is actively trying to continue that forward. But we see that as one critical piece, a big puzzle, to really get after that minority business development and ownership opportunities.
Great. Thank you, Randy. I think that's fantastic and appreciate your leadership and Burgett's and Scott's and everyone else involved in the program. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I'm curious, I'm hearing a lot of employers who are looking to reinvent their hiring right now and having significant struggles in doing so. I'm just curious, The Right Place's opinion on, is that like a temporary issue? Kind of like, you know, toilet paper was this time last year? Or do we have some more structural problem there?
So forgive me, I didn't hear the very first part of that question, but I think I understood where you're going with it. So was it a labor shortage dynamic, and you equated that to the toilet paper shortage? I might steal that analogy. If that was your question, I'll try to address it. So that might be one of the biggest surprises I've had since coming back on March 1st, is I knew labor was going to be a challenge in the pool, just the supply of labor was going to be a challenge. But I had, I underestimated how acute a challenge it would be. And as, you know, elected officials, maybe you'll like this analogy, but to me, it feels like on every corner, it's like a political campaign taking place, only instead of running for office, people are looking for people, looking for talent, and every corner has three and four signs. And so it's been staggering. And as in the last six weeks, I've stopped counting, but somewhere in the neighborhood of 250 companies, I've had a chance to sort of zoom around the region and meet with it. All of them, all of them are struggling on this front. The challenge is multifaceted right now. One, we're still in this pandemic, and up until, you know, last day or so, we were on a pretty bad trajectory from a caseload and hospitalization standpoint. So people are making their own health choices and staying out of the workforce. So that's one. Plenty of economists will talk about the challenges. There was definitely a need to sort of boost unemployment benefits in the midst of a pandemic. And as we kind of get through this recovery and get through the pandemic, there'll be questions around whether or not those additional benefits are necessary, or should we try to do things that help move people back into the workforce? And then schools and daycare challenges, we've seen a disproportionate number of women exit the workforce altogether. So whereas our unemployment today is in the neighborhood of 5%, which is quite a recovery where we were a year ago at this time, when we were pushing 20%. On top of that 5% unemployment, though, we've got to add another 2% to 2.5% percentage points of people who have left the workforce altogether. So to answer your question directly, I don't know. Historically, in recessions, and we saw this in the Great Recession, if people are not able to get back into the workforce within one year, they suffer then through long-term sustained unemployment and oftentimes don't re-enter the workforce altogether. So we've got to do our part as a community and as an employer base to get people back into the workforce. Otherwise, those individuals run the risk of being long-term unemployed, which isn't healthy for them and their families. So we are working very closely with our training partners to make sure if people are out of work because their skill sets no longer align with available jobs, so in the short term, we still see a number of unemployed, the concentration of unemployed is within our hospitality industries, whether it's hotels and restaurants and entertainment venues. Are there opportunities for those folks to get just a dose of training to make them more employable at other places? Because today, we have as many job postings today as we had pre-pandemic. So the jobs are out there. But the three issues I mentioned before, between the health concerns, the daycare issues, and the, you know, competing with the benefits offered through unemployment, it's the labor pool has shrunk and the demand and supplier are out of whack. We've got to put forth effort to try to make, make sure folks are, their skill sets or their ability, their employability aligns with what the needs are in the marketplace right now. So it's a hot topic for us here, absolutely, Commissioner, and we're pushing forward, trying to find ways to work with our employers and work with our training partners to make those matches as best we can. We need to make sure it is like the toilet paper dynamic, where it was an issue for a couple of weeks and then resolved itself. If it becomes a sustained problem, then I think our people are going to be suffering. And that's not where we want to be.
Yes, I'd like to just, this is Commissioner Womack. Was I called to speak?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Randy Thiel, I just want to welcome you and I'm definitely very proud that The Right Place has chose you to be President and CEO. Going to keep this short for the sake of time. I won't ask any questions. I'll call if I have any. But I think last year, the Small Business Survival Grant really helped a lot of businesses. And then there were some grants that came from the state of Michigan that you were the steward of. And in that situation, helped thousands of businesses. in that situation helped thousands of businesses. So I just wanted to let everybody at the Right Place know that the community certainly appreciates the Right Place and what it does within the city of Grand Rapids and Kent County as a whole. Everything you've done, but since I represented Grand, I represent Grand Rapids, I thought I'd throw that in, but welcome aboard, Randy.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Legrand, thank you, Chair. I, I just have a technical question about some of your numbers. I know that you're, you know, we're focusing on businesses, your job is attracting businesses, but when we're uh, looking at figures for average wages or, or new retain drops or any of those, are we tracking those across all sectors like public? Uh, I mean, sorry, healthcare sectors, which are not necessarily, you know, for profit or uh, higher education. So are those wages for everyone? And likewise, is, is the talent development, talent growth that we're, that you're looking to do, is that across all sectors as well? Or are you really only focusing on, you know, traditional business sectors?
Okay, yeah, thank you for the question. And again, I, it's probably my computer, it's a little bit choppy, but I understood the question to be around wages and, and how we calculated that. Those, those wage numbers are, are those um, jobs that are, the wages paid to the jobs that are strictly attached to the projects that we've assisted directly. So they tend to be private sector jobs in, across a wide array of manufacturing, technology, health science type of employment. So that is not, that wages is the type of projects and the type of companies and types of jobs that we're helping to attract and grow here in, in the region. It is not sort of the region-wide sort of demographic census kind of information. Those are strictly wages attached to the jobs. And, and that's part of the reason why we keep track. Our job here at the Right Place is to help elevate, you know, earlier I talked about our vision, trying to create sustainable economic growth for all and provide opportunity for all. They need to be pathway jobs. They need to be jobs that allow people to grow and achieve a higher level of, of wage and a higher quality of life as a result. And so that's why we track the wages of the projects to be helped, that, that we assist, so we can make sure we're moving the needle in that regard. Um, in terms of where we focus our energy, the second part of your question, you know, certainly in, in West Michigan, our, our bread and butter, our core is manufacturing. That has been a longstanding center of excellence, and that is something that has provided those pathway jobs for so many people. Uh, we have roughly 200,000 people across the region that work in manufacturing. And so we wake up every day making sure we can do everything we can to sustain that for global center of excellence, because it is a, it's a powerful part of our economy. We also have to recognize that manufacturing wakes up every day trying to get leaner, more efficient, that, that has an impact on the number of jobs. Now wages will climb as a result of jobs getting more technical, more skilled, but the number of jobs is likely to decline. So we are adding to the mix. So focus on manufacturing, it's sustaining that, that global center of excellence. And not but, not or, but and let's get after the technology sector. Let's continue to build on health sciences and let's add additional financial services jobs that have those high wages and high growth. Not so that's.
Any other questions today before we go? Danny, oh, Commissioner put in.
Thank you, Chair. I um, I appreciated the, the comments uh, uh, around labor force participation and how a, a large part of this is still the pandemic affecting every aspect of our lives from uh, the ness, the needs to provide childcare to just people feeling unsafe to, to uh, uh, work in, in uh, large group settings. And I wondered, um, what, is there value or has this already been done where the Right Place has worked with uh, its partner employers, the area of employers around promoting the importance of the vaccine and helping uh, remove, even though there are fewer barriers than there were even a few weeks ago, removing barriers to employees so that they can sign up for the vaccine. Um, as well as uh, in light of the recent news from the uh, uh, American Rescue Plan that uh, the uh, federal tax credits for paid sick leave can be applied to granting time off to employees to go get the vaccine, but also if they have a, a little bit of a reaction, time to, to recover uh, uh, once they've gotten their dose. Is that um, is that work that the Right Place is, is doing now or, or uh, hoping to take part in, in the, in the next year?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, as, as so many have said, and I would agree, there's no full economic recovery until we make our way through this, this pandemic. And um, you know, Tina Fries Decker is the Vice Chair of our Board. Mercy Hospital System is on our board as well. And so we've, we've leveraged that connection, that, that information um, to help inform the broader business community. One of the things that we've worked with, with our employers is to have them, so many of our employers every fall host flu clinics on site for their employees to, to get the vac, the flu vaccination. And that's been a very successful model um, from employers and employees across the region for many years. We, we have talked about that with our healthcare providers about doing the similar thing around the covid-19 vaccine. At the time, and it's, you we're trying to do the vaccination at a pace and a scale the country, the world has never done before. And so up until recently, the thought has been, and I think rightly, they can move 12,000 people a day through the DeVos Center rather than dispersing their volunteers and dispersing the nurses across the region. But now that we're getting to sort of a we've, we've, what are we pushing? 30, 40% now? I think we're going to start to see over the summer, some of the last mile, if you will, outreach from a vaccination standpoint may happen at employer um, facilities. And we've talked with employers who are receptive to hold two votes. The timing is quite right for that, but, but we're, we're gearing up for that moment, sir.
Wonderful. And if I may, Madam, we, um, has there been any um, uh, front-end work to see how employers uh, can qualify for the uh, new federal tax credit around paid sick time so that uh, if employees need to take time off to go to the DeVos Clinic and, and get their dose and come back or take some time to recover if they if the, if they had a, an individual reaction to the vaccine, is that uh, something that is that something that requires some front-end organizing work from the Right Place to help employers uh, qualify? And if so, has that work been done?
Yeah, great question. I, to be honest, I only saw that within the last 24 hours. So I don't know if that was earlier and I missed it, but it came to my attention about 24 hours ago. And so today I've got a meeting with one of the top accounting firms in the region and talking with them about what, what what the mechanics of that, that tax credit looks like, how employers have used it in the past and what education could we do, right? I, to me, that's just to broadcasting that message and making sure our employer base that we're so closely connected with understands what that opportunity means. And again, all of those things I think are meant to break, to remove barriers to get the vaccine. And um, I know from talking with employers, they're eager to help and, and just waiting to do, waiting their turn in the process of, of delivering the vaccine. And I think the tax credit could be one additional um, sort of boost, if you will, to get them. So I would expect our role would be communication and just amplifying that.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions in the room or any other questions? I don't see any hands raised in virtual. So thank you, everyone. Thank you, Randy and Tim for being here. I really appreciate it. Of course, you know, the wifi uh, was one of my uh, huge priorities. So I really, really, really appreciate you guys picking that up. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. Have a great day.
Thank you. All right, we're on to item six, public comment related to the agenda or any agenda item. Uh, I don't see anyone here in the room today. Is there anyone cam in the chat or on the email? If you have messages in the inbox and there are no hands raised in the chat. All right, we'll move on to item seven, consent agenda. Now, Commissioner Park. Commissioner Sparks, are you still with us? She's muted. Can we unmute her or she has to? Does that mean to unmute her?
Unme, I'm here.
Oh, there she is.
I am sorry, I just got an iPhone. So I was always an Android girl and this is just, oh gosh, sorry.
We are asking you for a motion for the consent agenda.
Yes, I make a motion to move the consent agenda for today's date.
By Commissioner Sparks, support by Commissioner, support by Commissioner, questions or comments on the consent agenda? You don't in the room? All right, Madam, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Reevee.
Yes.
Teal.
Yeah.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Volkowski. Commissioner Volkowski.
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Scans.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 yeas and zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Right, we are on to item eight of our agenda and I will call on Commissioner Legrand for your votes for President.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I would like to move uh, Resolution, uh, sorry, Resolution 35, Day 8, purchase and development rights, selection criteria for 2021. The Administrator's Office.
Move by Commissioner Legrand, support by Commissioner.
Support by Womack.
Hennessy, questions or comments on Resolution 35? You're in the room, any, anyone in the chat? All right, Madam, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 35, Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Jones.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yeah.
Burl.
No.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Commissioner?
No.
Commissioners Coleman.
No.
Reevee.
Yes.
Teal.
Yeah.
Sparks. Commissioner Sparks.
Yes, yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yeah.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Scans.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 16 yeas, two nays. The motion passes. Resolution 35 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam, we are on to eight D of our agenda and now Commissioner Brevi.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 36 up to Day's Date, the 2021 Equalization Report from the Bureau of Equalizing. By Commissioner Brevi, support by Commissioner Coleman. Questions or comments on Resolution 36?
None here, none in virtual. Madam, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 36, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Reevee.
Yes.
Teal.
Yeah.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yeah.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Scans.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 36 is adopted.
We are on to eight C of our agenda and now I will call on Commissioner Brevi.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 37 of today's date, Spectrum Health, Health Resources and Services Administration for the Strong Beginning Program for 2021 and 2022 from the Health Department. By Commissioner Brevi, support by Commissioner Legrand. Questions or comments on Resolution 37?
There's no one comment I will need to abstain because any other comments, Pam, and the questions in the chat, Commissioner Volkowski?
Um, thank you, Chair. Yeah, um, just to note, um, I uh, had to leave the Finance Committee meeting early on Tuesday when this was discussed. And so I followed up with Adam London and, and um, he connected with other folks on his staff, just so, so people are aware of the history of this. Um, you know, 20 years ago, um, Kent County, we had um, infant mortality rates for African-American babies and Hispanic babies that unfortunately rivaled third world nations. And the disparity between, um, again, uh, white babies and African-American babies and Hispanic babies, um, and rates of, of infant mortality or death. Um, were about three times more, um, if, if they were children of color. And so, um, you know, we continue to have this concerted effort and um, we continue to bend the curve. Um, now they're only about twice as much based on uh, what was reported to me. Um, again, still not acceptable. However, movement continues towards parity and for every child. Um, hopefully getting towards zero. So, so yeah, just that historical note and good to find out that um, positive results continue to happen. However, you know, we'll just say the covid has added a few barriers to the process.
Other questions or comments on this resolution? None, Madam, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 37, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Reevee.
Yes.
Teal.
Yeah.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Scans.
Yes.
Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays and one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 37 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam, we are on to eight D of our agenda and I will call Commissioner Womack.
I'd like to move Resolution 38 of today's date, the covid emergency rental assistance payment processing with Kent County Community Action.
Support.
By Commissioner Womack, support by Commissioner Coleman. Questions or comments on Resolution 38 today? Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I don't know if Susan Cervantes is on or not, but 374,000 indicate to cover indirect costs. Does that include labor costs is the question, uh, at first hand. And then secondly, um, this involves retention of a lot of temporary help. And I just wondered if there's any update of how that retention is going in this.
Susan, are you here with us today?
I can take anything to that, right?
Uh, on the second point. Thank you. On your second point, Commissioner, yes, we have started the case management portion of the CERA program. We have temporary staff on board with KCCA who are reviewing applications. On the item before the board this morning, this I believe would include any, the personnel involved in processing of payments. That will be one temporary fiscal clerk.
If I could follow up, as I recall, the number that we were looking at, I read like 20, 30 temporary, quite a number. Um, have they been able to fill all those positions?
Based on continued planning for the administration of the program, we will not need that many temporary employees. Instead, we are targeting 15 to 17 for case management and one for fiscal. And I believe there, they have more than half of that hired and are working toward getting the total temp count that they need.
Okay, but I'm not applying, so don't get me wrong. I just wanted.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to note the difference between what we're doing here locally and at the federal level. I think we're managing to squeeze.
I think we're managing to squeeze illegal folks coming across the border into hotels down there at a cost of hundreds of thousands of dollars per family, which is just mind boggling for some of us, and that's the best we could do at the federal level. So we're spending hundreds of thousand hours per family, per month, uh, down at the southern border, um, and I'm just so glad we're now operating through that same model. Thank you.
Any questions or comments on Resolution thirty-eight before we vote? Alright, Madam Chair, please call the roll.
Thank you Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt Resolution thirty-eight, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman. Reeve.
Yes.
Teal.
Yeah.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Scans.
Yes.
Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have eighteen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution thirty-eight is adopted.
Madam Chair, we're on to our last Resolution of the day, eight D, and I will again call Commissioner Reeve.
Thank you Chair Bolter, I move Resolution thirty-nine of today's date, which also happens to be birthday. The item is Chief Daisy Clark Park, land acquisition from the Parks Department. By Commissioner Reeve, support by Commissioner.
Scag, second.
Questions or comments on this resolution? Any questions? Questions? Alright, Madam Chair, please call the roll.
Thank you Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt Resolution thirty-nine, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan, Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Reeve.
Yes.
Teal.
Yeah.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yeah.
LeGrand.
Yeah.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Scans.
Yes.
Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have eighteen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution thirty-niner is adopted.
Thank you Madam Chair, we are on to item nine of our agenda, public comments related to any general county matters. Don't have anyone here today. Do you have anyone in the email or in share? I don't know who there is, a member in the public, I would like to speak in the chat. Okay, do you have a name? Anna Diaz. Anna Diaz, are you there? In three minutes, please give us your name and address.
Yes, I am here. My name is Anna Diaz and I'm the Vice President with Community Rebuilders.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you. You will be hearing today from three additional Community Rebuilders staff about a very important program that has been defunded by the county. Community Rebuilders is a subrecipient of county home funds. This funding operates our Kent Together program. At the March eleventh Commissioners Meeting, the five-year consolidated plan was approved. This plan included a reduction in home tenant-based rental assistance. On March fifteenth, we were notified by the county that our Kent Together contract would not be renewed due to this reduction. Since two thousand and seventeen, Community Rebuilders has received approximately two point six million dollars in tenant-based rental assistance, and has a ninety-eight percent success rate with consumers served exiting to a permanent housing destination. Consumers served with this housing voucher often do not have the opportunity to rent from a traditional apartment complex, nor do they qualify for a majority of the affordable housing developments. Our team of Housing Resource Specialists work with private landlords on a daily basis to help consumers secure safe, decent, and affordable housing in the Kent County area. With all of this hard work, we have seen tremendous results. Defunding this program in the midst of a pandemic will leave literally homeless families and those at risk of homelessness without this very valuable resource. We ask that during this national crisis, you reconsider funding for this program. Thank you.
Anna, we also have Miranda Van Zegren. Miranda, are you here today?
I'm here, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, good morning. I'm a Divisional Director with Community Rebuilders and I would like to speak about some of the historical data for the Kent Together Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, which really highlights.
Where, you give us your address please for the minutes.
I'm sorry?
Please state your address for the minute.
Yes, Miranda Van Zegren, Divisional Director with Community Rebuilders, speaking on Kent Together Home Tenant-Based Rental Assistance.
Thank you.
Um, so this data really highlights the need for this program in our community. The goal of the Kent Together program is to prevent and resolve episodes of homelessness as well as to make housing more affordable in Kent County. Since the start of the Kent Together program nearly four years ago, seven hundred and sixty-six Kent County residents resolved their housing crisis with tenant-based rental assistance. This also includes a hundred and eighty-three families with four hundred and eight children under the age of seventeen. Kent Together also has significantly helped mitigate the severe economic impacts of COVID nineteen. Thirty-three percent of households entered Kent Together with zero income or unemployment income and were able to achieve permanent housing through this program. Kent Together also supports Kent County's consolidated plan outcome of providing housing stability and equitable access to housing. Through the provision of tenant-based rental assistance, ninety-eight percent of households exited from Kent Together to permanent housing situation. Permanent housing situations include rental by client or living with friends and family permanently. Kent Together also addresses the need to reverse the effects of historic and systemic exclusion of minorities in housing that has led to high concentrations of poverty and racial and ethnic segregation within Kent County. Countywide data shows that African-American individuals and families disproportionately experience homelessness in Kent County. Often, they're not similarly represented in the demographic makeup of housing programs. Kent Together seeks to address racial disparities and we continually monitor demographics to ensure that we're serving all groups fairly and equitably. The racial demographics of persons served in Kent Together match the demographics of those experiencing homelessness in our community. Forty-nine percent of persons served in Kent Together are Black and African-American, thirty-three percent are white or Caucasian, and eighteen percent identify as multiple or other races. Seventy-six percent of families entering Kent Together were Black or African-American. We also evaluate our program exit outcomes to ensure that there are no racial disparities for those exiting the Kent Together program. Ninety-nine percent of Black and African-American households have exited the program to permanent housing. One hundred percent of other are multiple races, and ninety-five percent of white households exited to permanent housing. This shows that Kent Together addresses racial disparities in both who the program serves and the program outcomes and is vital to the Kent County community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Miranda. Also have Cheryl Fitzgerald. Cheryl, could you please give us your name and address?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Fitzgerald. My address is four three two Fountain Street, Northeast, Grand Rapids, Michigan, four nine five oh three. Um, I am the Program Manager of the Kent Together Program at Community Rebuilders. I wanted to, I wanted to share a couple of consumer stories to show this, the impact that this program has had on the people that we are serving. So, the first story, um, my name is Becca and I'm a single mom who has worked with the Kent Together Housing Resource Specialist to find permanent housing. I had been living in my car after being evicted from my last home. I lost my job because of COVID nineteen and struggled to find housing because of my income and recent eviction. My Housing Resource Specialist really listened to my story and never let me go, give up hope. Through her partnership, I was able to connect with a landlord who was renting to a friend of mine. My Housing Resource Specialist was able to talk with the landlord and worked it out, so I didn't even have to fill out an application. Without the help of my Housing Resource Specialist, I wouldn't have been able to find this apartment. Now my son and I have finally a safe place to call home. The second story, um, I was connected to the Kent Together Program through Community Housing Connect. I had been staying in emergency shelter for several months and was unable to find a place to rent. I had never rented on my own before and didn't have any credit history. I also had recently lost my job after being put on medical restrictions due to the complications from my pregnancy. All of my applications for apartments kept getting denied and I was feeling hopeless. During the first meeting with my Housing Resource Specialist, I shared my struggles with finding housing and my ongoing health issues. It became easier for me to talk about what I felt my family needed and come up with a clear plan to find housing. Only twenty-three days after first meeting with my Housing Resource Specialist, I was able to find an apartment that I love. I've moved into my new home and I feel safe in my neighborhood. I've had my baby and have even found a new job. I'm feeling hopeful again and I am so thankful for the support of the Kent Together Program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Cheryl. Any other public comment today related to general county matters? Sure, no one's here. Other people raised in the chat, Yvonne Jackson. Yvonne Jackson, are you here today with us? Yvonne?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
We can, you have three minutes, please give us your name and address.
Yvonne Jackson, eleven twenty Monroe Northwest, Grand Rapids, Michigan, four nine five zero three. I am the Director of Resources and Community Affairs at Community Rebuilders. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to appeal to you for your consideration on the defunding of Kent Together. Uh, Kent Together has been a program that has been available in our community for over four years, providing critical funding for meeting the needs of those experiencing homelessness in Kent County. Uh, some of the great things about Kent Together is that it's strength-based, uh, and it offers housing choice. Um, the Housing Resource Specialists, uh, in our supported services in the form of housing search and stability, and their landlord negotiation is key for these households uh, who would not probably ordinarily pass traditional background criteria of property managers. Without Kent Together, seven hundred and sixty-six persons would not have been able to access affordable housing and would have remained or become homeless. A couple of important things to note is that Kent Together does not serve the same population as CERA funds or other cares funding coming into the community. It is, I believe, the only tenant-based rental assistance program available through Kent County. CERA funds are wonderful funds and, uh, coming in at a much-needed time, but they are short-term and meet the needs of households who are facing eviction. Kent Together serves households who are literally homeless, staying in emergency shelters, on the streets, or places not meant for human habitation. We feel that there must be a resource available for these households who need access to affordable housing, who would also not meet the traditional background, income, or credit criteria for affordable housing projects or homeownership programs. We further feel that there must be a long-term strategic funding plan to have resources available in the community for families who are newly homeless. Kent Together meets that need and provides long-term stability for families. We've seen a lot of success and you've seen some of the compelling data about those, uh, so we are asking that we maintain current level of project operations requesting a million dollars each year over the course of five years. Thank you.
Thank you Yvonne. Anyone else? Good? Alright, hands are raised. No other hands are raised, move on to reports. Item ten of our agenda. Do we have any Commissioner reports today? Commissioner Jones?
Thank you Chair Bolter, I have three, so everybody get a little comfortable, but I'll try to keep them brief. Let's start with Finance. May fourth, we have the Finance Meeting will be here in this jury room, because following that is an entire Board Work Session on the CAA. That's our first of two. The second CAA Board Work Session will follow May twenty-seventh, wherever that Board Meeting's held. Uh, and I just wanted everyone to make a note of that, it's also going to be hybrid, just like this. So for those who want to participate remotely can, those who want to be in person can. And again, that's both Finance and the CAA Work Session. The CAA Work Session is, as I mentioned in Finance, allowing us to share information on the CAA, how it was formed, it is on committee, and a lot of the documents that we might not have ever seen before on the formation of the CAA.
And it's a Board Work Session now, so everybody.
Correct. I was, it is, the CAA Work Session is an entire Board Work Session. It just happens to follow Finance, but it also happens to follow the entire Board on the twenty-seventh. But it is an entire Board Work Session. It is going to be at nine thirty or following the Finance Committee Meeting, so the Finance Committee Meeting's running late. It will be after that, if it's earlier, we'll still start it at nine thirty. So that's again, May fourth and May twenty-seventh. The Township Supervisors met in person. I'd like to thank our very own Chair Bolter, who was the guest speaker and covered the update on the Administrator's search. There was a lot of good discussion and questions. It's a, it's a very involved group, the Township Supervisors, and I'm glad to be the representative to attend and make sure they're updated and be a liaison for county matters for them. The last piece is the Kent County Parks Foundation met, two pieces with that. The first one is there is some discussion of a potential park addition that is still in negotiation and process. Uh, sometimes opportunities arise that might not show up on the master plan, that are still worth considering. So one of those might be coming down the pipe. There's a lot of heights, it's a lot of money. Uh, so we're gonna let those discussions continue to happen. Uh, Dan is involved, so we'll see where that goes. Just wanted to kind of get that on everybody's radar, that could potentially be a flow through the Parks Foundation. The Parks Foundation would get the money and then on behalf of Kent County, after we look at it all, end up buying that. We buy from the Parks Foundation type of process, from what I understand. Um, nice piece of property. The other piece is we do have the Park Foundation Volunteer Day. Um, I'm leading that out at Lobbises on May first. The details were all in the County Administrator Letter. We're also encouraging everyone here as a county commissioner to look at your calendars later this year, next year. Get a county park that you like. I found a project at Lobbises that needs to be desperately done, the picnic tables. Well, there's room for improvement there. So the focus is gonna be stating picnic tables, lots of them. They said we're gonna accommodate over a hundred volunteers, so there's nothing but room. And they even said if ended with more than a hundred, they'll accommodate. Right now, there's about fifty, including some boys' help groups. Uh, lunch will be provided and I hope that, uh, each commissioner looks at their local parks for county that's near them, finds some projects. You know, we have a very active ongoing volunteer group anyway, led by Jenny, who is amazing. And a lot of that focuses on the plants and weeding and planting. I had an eye for more, these picnic tables on a place I want to have a picnic lunch at. So, and I was there, and I did that last summer and thought, I know, we can do better. So I figured, this isn't an ask for money, this is an ask for your time. So if you could give your time, that would be great, whether it's this one or a different one, and I will end it with that.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you Chair Bolter, just a quick one, so the John Woo Zoo Board will leave this afternoon, but I've had a couple of Finance meetings, uh, prior. I just want to point out, the first seven days of the zoo opening, so over ten thousand people come in. I think a lot of people feel, we take it for granted that this is just a little Kent County zoo. Uh, in that first seven days, we had visitors from eleven different states. The number one zip code for people visiting, it wasn't Kent County, it was Traverse City. So, when you look at the economic impact of that little zoo that just serves Kent County, it reaches far beyond and bringing people into the community. it reaches far beyond and bringing people into the community and that economic impact continues to grow as they work to maintain that Kent County asset which we benefit from. Thank you.
Commissioner Constance, any other, Commissioner Brevi?
Thank you, Chair Volter. Yesterday, we had a Grand Rapids Public Museum Board of Directors meeting and we talked about a couple of upcoming exhibits, so some exciting stuff. There's going to be a really interesting exhibit on fashion and how, you know, it's the Grand Rapids community has contributed to the world of fashion. Also pop culture and from what I hear, there's going to be a tennis shoe collection that's shown in that. So if you have any teenage boys, it may be a good exhibit to get that demographic involved. And there's going to be an exhibit on flying dinosaurs. And then in the winter too, there will also be an exhibit on snow and ice. So that'll be a great thing to bring school communities in, where kids are learning about that. Attendance has been higher than expected. You know, during this pandemic, there's still people coming in the doors and there's also a lot of virtual attendance where schools and teachers are bringing some of the virtual experiences the museum has provided in classrooms. So I'm really pleased with how the museum has been able to pivot and provide those virtual opportunities. I think it's an awesome opportunity for schools to get involved. One thing too that was mentioned, the museum is working on an expansion plan that's multi-year. And one of the concerns that has come up, the Whitewater Group was supposed to have some permitting approved by the state in February and they have not received that approval yet. And some of that, the approvals are also, some of the museum plans rely on some of those approvals. So in order to move forward to the next steps, we need to make sure the Whitewater Group is getting the right permitting done. And I guess I would really like to maybe get an update. I feel like it's been a while since we first met and see where they're at in the process, you know, what are some hangups that are going on. I do understand too that some of the dams have been noted as historic and that may hinder some of the process too. The museum has to take anything that's taken out of the water as into their archives, from what I understand, because they've been labeled as historic. So it would be good to look into some of that as we move forward with this. And there's my report.
Awesome, thank you. Any other Commissioner official reports today? Seeing none in the room. Ain't none in virtual. All right, we'll move on to miscellaneous. We have miscellaneous today. Commissioner Constance?
Thank you, Chair Volter. The Michigan Association Board met Tuesday. So I just want to give a couple of things that have changed on the MAP website. The password for Kent County and the user ID is the same for everyone. What we have done, probably ninety percent of the website doesn't need that code to get access, trying to get more visitors to that. I wanted to give you an update. There are currently a couple of pieces of legislation that everyone should have got the emails on. If you do want to respond to your rep, it's really easy. Takes about ten seconds. Everything is auto-fill and you can add to the note if you want. The two right now that, that we've got our eyes on, first is the four-year county commissioner terms. Max always said that we're not partisan. We don't care what year it's on. We run on those years anyways. But that looks like it might have a little headwind because they're arguing whether it should be in a presidential year or the governor year. So Max always put a position on that. We don't care. I think one thing you can tell your reps if they do call or reach out to you, got to remember back in nineteen sixty-three, the terms for county commissioners were four years. It was the legislature in nineteen sixty-eight that reduced those down to two. So this isn't a political battle that, that, that we do. A lot of the fears is that the legislators fear county commissioners who have free shots at them every two years. And as a county commissioner, I don't know if I have any desire ever to be a state rep. So I think that feeling is more true that way than it is representatives wanting to knock the county commissioners off when they get done. The other one, Bill forty-one sixty-four, has to deal with the courts. Once again, Mac does not oppose the legislation, but we oppose is that this is another unfunded mandate. And if they can work that through, Mac will give it a hundred percent support, you know, from our end. And then finally, one thing that we are working at. Some of the newer members might not remember it, but when revenue sharing was reworked, when the state was out of money, it was the counties that stepped forward with this tax scheme to collect taxes early and then let counties live off of that revenue in lieu of the revenue sharing payments from the state. That was all fine and I guess you could say dandy and the state seems to forget what the counties did for the state to bail them out of that financial crisis. But during the repayment period, depending on the year you came in, when you ran out of money, certain counties got the full amount, others were deducted the cost of living raise in that. So of the eighty-three counties, there's about sixty-seven counties that didn't get the full share and that's never been addressed. So Mac is putting an effort on and we're getting a good response that that needs to be corrected. I know Kent County's on that list of sixty-seven that has money that we weren't fully reimbursed under that formula. So I'll try to keep you up to date on that and go to the website if you need any other information. If you're signed up for the virtual conference, they ask you to select your outbreak sessions that you want so it makes it easier to move you from room to room during this meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Constance, Commissioners Gags?
Thank you, Chair. I bring you greetings from District Nineteen, the District of Champions. Once again, congratulations to the Boys Swim and Dive Team of East Grand Rapids. They're state champions in District Three, led by Charlie Bear and Billy Kirsch-Gessner. Real team effort. Only one person won their, their individual events. But the, the boys stayed very close to the top of the podium and were able to pull out a win. That's the one hundred and thirty-eighth championship, state championship, the state record for East Grand Rapids and the thirty-fourth state championship for swim, boys and girls, Coach Butch Briggs, who started coaching back in nineteen seventy-four. So congratulations to Coach Briggs and all the boys on the swim and dive team. Thank you very much, Chair, and go east.
Any other Commissioner miscellaneous? I have a few, I'll speak to things.
Commissioner Brevi? Thank you, Chair Volter. One thing I just wanted to mention is, you know, I mentioned before, I volunteered at the Boss Boys Vaccine Plant a couple times. I'm scheduled to be here next week, right? There is definitely room for others to volunteer. There's lots of opportunities. So if you want to get involved, talk to me and I'll help get you set up and share some of my experience. There's also vaccine available. So if you or someone that you love has not been vaccinated and is interested, they can go to vaccinatewestmi.com and register and schedule their appointment. It's very easy. Getting the vaccine is easy and it's very quick. So I highly recommend it. I'd love to see our community get healthy again and roll up your sleeves.
And sleeves up. All right, Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment about the Whitewater project. You know, I think I've been around long enough to remember the original estimates on that project being around four or five million dollars. And over the last decade or so, those costs are now exceeding forty. I would say they're going to be at excess of fifty million dollars. I'm trying to figure out any other projects we've been involved with and continue to support that have exceeded original costs by, you know, ten times the amount. I think we need to go back and look at the history and figure out why this is costing so much money to add some bubbles to the water. I don't get it. I didn't get it then. I really don't get it now, but this cost is getting ridiculous and I think we need to take a long look. We, we spend most of the meeting worried about revenue and what, how we can handle real problems in the city of Grand Rapids regarding putting people in hotels and, you know, mitigation efforts and everything else that we do. And yet we have this runaway train called Whitewater that the costs are astronomical and we're at the mercy of the state. DNR, whoever's making those decisions, probably rightfully so, but I think the original context of this project was given to us without all the facts at that time. And I think we bought into something that's changed so much and I think it's time to reevaluate that because I am not comfortable at all being involved with that project anymore. It's just way too expensive, so. And we don't know what the final expense will be. It might end up being a hundred million dollars when they get done. Who knows? It's monopoly money at this point. So that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Antor. Any other Commissioner miscellaneous today? See no one in the room? No one in the chat? All right, just a couple of quick things. We have determined to move this state of the county and we're going to try to push that back to the fall, hoping that maybe we can meet in person and have a new administrator at that point. So just FYI on that. I would like to get all of your input on the format of today's layout. We do have to figure out something. Across the street at the Boss Place was this big, huge massive room. There are a lot of costs involved in the audio visual, which we kind of have here in place. So there's reasons why we didn't go over there, but I don't know if you like this format. Do we want to change the format? So let's continue to work on process improvement there. I have appointed James Peacock to the Housing Commission. James is an employee at Grand Rapids Public Schools and does a lot with the Kent School Service Network, so I think he would be a great addition to that committee and just wanted to share that. This probably should have been in the reports, but the Administrator Search Committee is doing well. We've given them an additional three weeks to find a more robust candidate pool, so we'll continue to work on that and keep you updated on that. We're looking to do a first round of interviews in the middle of May, so that is coming. Lastly, the American Recovery Plan Funds that the county is getting, working with staff. We still don't even have the guidelines or the guidance, the official guidance from the federal government here in that might come May tenth. But as you guys know, with CARES, the federal government kept changing the guideline as we went down the process. So we've got until the end of twenty, two thousand and twenty-four to spend the money, to utilize the money. So I think it's important that we just kind of take our time, evaluate what's in allowable use, look at what the state is going to be doing with their funds to really kind of get our arms around the county's needs. So that's kind of where we're at with that. I know a lot of us are going to be asked questions and how we're spending the money and where we're at. So I think for now, we're really not going to do anything until we know what the actual guidance is. Lastly, I did want to mention Commissioner Green and all his work on broadband at the Supervisors meeting that we had. They're all getting funding as well individually and wondering what's in allowable use. I don't think those are in allowable use. We don't know that for sure. Of course, that's where they would want to spend their money. But the County Road Commission is hitting a limit on what they can do. Everybody has their money, but the Road Commission has to do the fifty percent match and they only have so much staff. So they are looking at broadband as well and so we're looking at getting really creative. And I hope you can continue to follow Commissioner Green's work on the Subcommittee because I think we might have a really good opportunity to kind of pool our resources and really look at something really innovative with broadband at the county. So with that, I will call on Commissioner Sparks for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adjourn the meeting subject to the call of the Chair to Thursday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at eight thirty a.m. for an official meeting.
I, Commissioner Sparks, support by, support by Commissioner Brevi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you, everyone.